Good afternoon, this is a regular, hi Mary Lou. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court dated the 22nd of January 2008. And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna do the invocation and the pledges to the flag when we come out of executive session. Uh, so, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning claim of Timothy R. Floyd for discussion of possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning outstanding invoices from indigent care providers on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 19 for right of way for the FM 732 project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Lastly, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1A and 1B Block 122, Brownsville original town site pursuant to Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. We're gonna, we're gonna do the executive session items, then we'll go right before public comment into our invocation and the allegiances of the flags. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning claim of Timothy R. Floyd for discussion of possible settlement. Do I hear motion to instruct our attorneys to proceed along the terms and conditions as described in executive session? Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning outstanding invoices from indigent care providers on, dot, dot, dot. For those of y'all that hear about that, we are gonna ask, well, let me, let me entertain a motion to instruct our Civil Division Attorney to ask for an Attorney General's opinion to determine the, whether or not the money that is, that is still outstanding to our indigent healthcare providers, uh, is a legal debt of this county. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second? By Commissioner Gadsa, any further discussion? Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknown, this has never happened before because of the way, uh, we entered into a contract with Valley Baptist. Over the years, the indigent healthcare providers, uh, that were always getting paid, or it appeared to them that they're always getting paid on a timely basis, but what, uh, what a lot of the providers did not realize is that we were using future monies to pay prior debt. In this particular case, we would not be having these discussions, uh, had we not entered into an agreement with Valley Baptist that, whereas they would take over our indigent healthcare. So the bottom line is, there's about $2 million that is out there that's owed to various providers. Uh, we're not sure if it is a legal obligation of the county at this point, uh, the way the Constitution is, is written in terms of using future monies to pay prior year debts. So because none of us really know, and our civil counsel is, is not sure, uh, we have decided to ask for an Attorney General's opinion to make that determination. Uh, those opinions normally take 30 to 60 days, uh, before we get it, depending on, on their workload. So once we have that, then we'll be able to make a decision. If the Attorney General comes back and, and tells us that we cannot pay this by law, then obviously this court is unable to pay it. If they come back and they say, you know, it is a legal debt, then this court's gonna have to find a, a mechanism or the monies, uh, if the court decides to do that, to pay everybody, uh, what is owed to them. So at this point, we're gonna ask for an Attorney General's opinion and have them let us know really what the status is of this particular obligation. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 19 for right of way for the FM 732 project. Do I hear motion to, uh, accept the, the counter offer of $49,500? Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gadsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1A and 1B Block 122. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. All right, now we try to go back to our regular agenda. Uh, we have Mr. Andreas Lewis, pastor, lead us in invocation.
Thank you Judge, let us pray. Lord Jesus, you taught us to pray, our Father who is in heaven, hallowed be your name, your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Tonight, we begin these proceedings by recognizing you as our Father and Creator, who is to be honored by this court and by all who appear before it tonight. May all honor you by speaking the truth in humility, by seeking to do right as you see right, and by respecting their neighbor as they would like to be respected. We also pray that the decisions made here would be a foretaste of the wisdom and righteousness that will, that you will bring to earth when you set up your kingdom in fullness. May your grace and favor be upon this court, we pray in your wonderful name. Amen.
Let me ask our treasurer, Mr. Bencourt, to get a little bit from the pledges to both flags, you can do it from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you David. Item three, public comments, I don't have any public comments. Anybody want to make a public comment that did not have the opportunity to sign up? All right.
Judge.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you looked a little smarter.
Yeah. Who asked to make a presentation, how to, how to, uh, take Commissioners Court minutes, um, and this young lady here just did a beautiful job. Uh, it was well attended, we had over 250 clerks there, and they were just so impressed with the work that she does, and, uh, she taught, uh, the other county clerks how to take minutes. She deserves a big round of applause.
Hi there, thank you very much. Thank you Joe, I think with all that hard training that you put her through, but yeah, she does do a good job and minutes get out on time and, and, uh, they're normally pretty accurate, so thank her, and thank you Joe. Item number four, I'm sorry.
Judge, excuse me Judge, I just wanted to, um, have a moment of silence for Mr. Anastasio Yen who passed away, um, on the 18th, uh, 17th of January. He had been, uh, a, an employee of the county for 40 years and worked, uh, in the Public Works section of the county under various county commissioners. And, uh, he'll be sorely missed. He was not only a very good and loyal worker, he was very dedicated to his community, and I'd like to extend our sympathy to the family and keep them in our prayers.
Well, can we rise and recognize a moment of silence for Mr. Yen? Thank you. Consent items. Consent items four through 30 and travel items 31A through 31P. Do I have any items any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately?
Judge, Commissioners requesting a table items number 22 and 23, I'm not ready to discuss those at this time.
What, what numbers, I'm sorry?
22 and 23.
So we tabled them?
Yes, please.
Item 17.
I have four and five.
Okay, I've got a request to take out item four, having to do with the lowest quote for the canopy structure. Item five, approval of the contract for the same thing. Item 17, uh, regarding the appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Um, I'd like to take out item 20 and 21, and my only questions on that are regarding the appropriations clause. We're tabling item 22 and 23, having to do with bids and approval of bids for concessions at the Isla Blanca Park area. Um, I'd like to have item 29 tabled, having to do with service agreement concerning Cameron County Emergency Management Communication. Travel item J, just a question, Javier, and we'll get to that when we get to it real quick. Aside from that, do I hear motion to approve all the other items that, uh, we're not taking out to discuss separately? Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gadsa. I'm, yeah, correct. Tamayo, I'm sorry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item four, consideration, approve the lowest quote for the canopy structure for the security wall project to Bowman Distributing Company.
Is somebody here that can tell me what this is? I mean, I recall discussing and approving a wall structure, but this is a carport structure?
This was part of the, the project that was added to the, uh, security wall, the canopy that'll go over the wall area as a second protection for the judges.
Is this for safety reasons? Is this for, I mean, what?
What the district judges were requesting in the overall project that?
A carport structure? I'm not, I wasn't here, so. I was here, but I, I, I do not recall, I recall discussing a wall structure, I recall discussing all of that, but I, I don't ever, maybe I was lost in my mind and space that day, but I don't recall ever discussing the installation of a carport structure to shade vehicles. I mean, I don't recall.
It was in the original.
It was part of the plan to, to ensure that there was nobody that could come over the wall and, you know.
I don't, I don't know that we discussed it, but it was in the original plan, you know, what was, what was used as background information.
I have a concern spending this money, I'll be very honest, for a carport structure. I have absolutely no concern with the expense in dealing with the security wall, the expensive gate system for entry and exit, all of that, you know, but I was, I was not aware of, or had been made aware of, that we had a canopy structure going in anywhere close to that wall.
No, it was, it was part of the discussions in planning for the wall structure.
Why don't we do this, let me, let me ask, let me ask that we table this item, unless y'all are ready to vote on it. Table the item, give back, give the court the, the.
Justification.
Well, not, not only the justification, but the original plans and the minutes of, of when that wall was approved, and see if, if at that point, you know, I, I don't think I was here, but I remember also just the wall, I don't remember anything about a, a carport and things of that nature, so if you could just get that information back to us, and if that's, is that part of the, the, because, was that part of the initial, let me ask you, how much was the initial contract for? Was it like 200 something thousand?
200 and something, yeah.
250? Um, and was, how much was it? Do you remember?
I think it was 250.
Okay, is, was this?
A lot was done in-house, and we probably needed to run down on what it's cost us so far and where we're actually at on the budget, and whether this was part of the budget.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't recall, and if it was part of the original agreement, why would we be, why would this have to come back to us to approve it if it was approved back when the initial concept was, was approved? So, let me ask for a motion to table this, get some, get some additional information for us.
We'll do that.
On that, okay? All right?
Move to table?
Move by Commissioner, move, uh, do I hear motion to table both items four and five? Moved by Commissioner Benavides?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gadsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item 17, consideration appointment of Dr. Chris Garcia and Ms. Hortensia Mancha to fill Commissioner positions with the Cameron County Civil Service Commission, and the reappointment of Mr. Javier De Leon as a Commissioner, designation of Mr. Javier De Leon as Chairman of the Civil Service Commission under Section 158.008 of the Local Government Code. John, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, and, and I appreciate pulling this out. Obviously, these terms of the Commissioners on the Civil Service Board run for a two-year period, and I realize they were appointed two years ago, I think, January 31st, or right at, at this time. So their terms are actually up. I guess my concern is that our civil service program is young, uh, it's actually only been, even though we appointed Commissioners, uh, two years ago, they weren't actually hearing any cases or, or listening to any of the issues that came up until probably the, that summer, which was about six months later. Because they had to help put the program together, organize the program, put the handbook together, and we had to go through a lot of, uh, legal ramifications and, and getting it designed, and who's in and who's out, and who's exempt. And it seems to me that we've got, uh, Commissioners there that have only been really working as civil service Commissioners as far as hearing cases for about a year and a half. They're the only ones that have the, the knowledge and the history behind them as to how the program works, and we're looking at replacing two of them, meaning that we're putting two new ones on, two out of three, uh, leaves kind of a bare bones operation for another period of time till these other two get up to speed on, on how the Civil Service Commission actually operates and the laws and regulations, and we've also recently revamped a lot of the handbook on civil service and a lot of the information in it. It just seems to me like we're maybe putting the two new ones at an awkward position and not taking advantage of the skills and abilities that the two older ones already have developed over the year and a half they've been there.
Yeah, and I appreciate the service that the, that the, the two current Commissioners have, have provided, and, uh, I gave, uh, I asked Commissioner Gadsa and Commissioner Tamayo to, if they want to replace somebody, give them the opportunity to replace them, same thing with Commissioner Benavides and you all get together, and these are the two names that, that came up. I think Javier De Leon has done a good job, I think, uh, we're not replacing all of them, I think he's a good anchor for that commission, uh, I think the, and I don't know Dr. Garcia, so if y'all would like to, to, to talk about, a little bit about her, but I know that, that Bruce, uh, contacted Ms. Mancha, uh, and explained to her what it was about, she's anxious to get started, she's already doing a lot of research and what all this is all about, and, and these are two-year terms, uh, and we can make this argument every two years, you know, why are we gonna replace them? So, I think it's, it's, uh, it's good public policy that, you know, these terms come up and, and, uh, you know, if y'all requested, you know, something to stay on, that was fine too, but, but, uh, but that's not what we got from, from, uh, from my two Commissioners to the left and, and my two.
I'll be, I'll be more than glad to.
Commissioner, if you'd like to explain who Dr. Garcia is and.
Yes, I'd, I'd be more than glad to. Uh, Dr. Garcia is, uh, from Harlingen, uh, she had lived in Ostresnose and recently moved to Harlingen. Uh, she has a vast experience in human resources. Uh, she was the, the Director for the Department of Human Resources in the Harlingen School District, um, she got her doctorate, uh, and, and in administration. She's an extremely intelligent, uh, young lady, she's retired and has all the time available. When I contacted her, she was extremely excited about this, uh, she said she was familiar with the, what civil service is, she will definitely be, uh, be contributing fairness to the, to the commission, as I'm sure the, all the members have done in the past, uh, and, um, I know that she would do an excellent job. And, uh, I don't think that we have to, I think that the more people we give an opportunity to serve as public servants, because that's what they are, uh, the better job we're doing, that, that's, that's how I see things. And, uh, when you have skills and when you have experience, it's not difficult to, to transmit that experience and those skills to whatever position you're, you're given. And I feel that she has the skills and the experience to be excellent on this commission.
And I'm certainly not questioning, you know, their experience, their experience, the two that are being proposed, or their skills. I certainly have a lot of confidence in y'all's, you know, choices of people. Uh, I do know Ms. Mancha, and I, I appreciate her skills and abilities. My questioning is the stability of the commission itself, and I guess part of that comes from my history of dealing with a civil service commission in the city of Brownsville, where, where I will tell you, Judge, I did get concerned about that commission because the Commissioners have been on there so long, you know? It seemed to be that they never were gonna be replaced, and some of them for 15 and 20 years, which I think is way too long, but as a, as a young, uh, commission that we have, as far as the time that it's been in existence, you know, I just wanna be sure that the stability of it is maintained and that, um, we don't lose any ground.
But in keeping the chair.
Unfortunately, we can't have staggered terms, which would really be the best thing, to have staggered terms, so you know you've got, because it could come up where all three would be replaced.
And that may be something we may wanna consider.
Be a good deal either.
Yeah, I don't know how we'd go about doing it, but, you know, maybe, we may wanna consider that, doing staggered terms.
Well, the statute says you can't.
Then we can't.
It says even if someone resigns in the middle of their term, you appoint someone for the balance remaining of that term, so there are always, all three of them are all gonna come up at the same time, and, you know, two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, someone may decide, well, let's get rid of all of them, and you have no experience left. And, and I, you know, I certainly am glad we're not doing that.
You know, and I think, and Mr. De Leon, I've, I've had several meetings with him, I think he's a good, he's a good anchor for that commission, uh, and again, I'm, I'm proud of Commissioner Benavides's recommendation of his mind, so I happened to run into her over the weekend, and, and she was really excited about it, I look forward to meeting Dr. Garcia as well. Um, anyway, so, any further comment, Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, no, I've had opportunity to visit with both of the individuals, and they seem to have expressed a desire to try to do what they need to do to help us run a good civil service commission. Uh, it's very evident that they have no agendas except to try to do what's right for the folks that they're gonna be working with, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, you know, to seeing Javier stay there and, and moving on, you know, I, I think it's, it's, uh, Dr. Garcia, you know, I know chairs the Sioux Clinic and Familial Board and has since, they've had some changes there, and she's done a really good job of keeping that board together, and she had no experience sitting on the board before then, she was just a.
She's done an excellent job.
Worked as an assistant superintendent at the school district, she got on there and has done an excellent job of gelling that group together, and she knows what it means to have good board members, and she's ready to be a good civil service commissioner with the chair that, that she's gonna work with.
And I'm sure they will be, and certainly Bruce Hodge from our legal department will be helping him along, as I'm sure the Nevada Law Firm will be helping him along. You know, so, yeah, I just wanted to express my concerns about the stability of the board, and, and while we're talking about the board and everything, we never did go back out for a legal attorney, uh, someone to represent them, we just, Nevada's still there temporarily.
Is that something that we would do or that they would do?
We or they won, we're gonna go out for, uh, requests or proposals from legal firms.
They probably, they probably need.
Well, but that's their, that's their call, I guess.
But I'm not sure at this point in time they should be doing that, because we've got two new ones now, and that may cause a disruption, maybe in a period of time.
Well, I think that's, you know, if, if that's their call, then, you know, let, let them make that call, and, you know, if they wanna do that, I think Bruce has been a good, a good guy there, and I think he's gonna provide a lot of leadership to them as well, so, all right. Commissioner Benavides, any comment?
Yes, Judge, uh, when, uh, this was first brought forth, my concern was that, uh, how did you, or how do, did we come about selecting the two people that were gonna be reappointed? I mean.
Because I, I wanted to keep Javier De Leon on, because he was the chair, and I've, I've had several conversations with him. The other ones, I pointed to you all, whomever you all wanted to.
Well, I mean, in all fairness, I think, um, any, any two, uh, could have been the ones that would be reappointed.
That's correct.
And, uh, but be that as it may.
Or really, really, any, any three.
Or any three.
Any three.
Okay, but be that as it may, um, I think, uh, I, I know Sessi very well, and I would like to publicly thank her for all the effort that she put into the organization and, uh, putting the civil service, um, into operation here in Cameron County, for the long, long meetings that I know that they had to go through, not only Sessi, but the other two members. And, uh, so, in replacing, I thought that Mrs. Mancha would be a good person to, uh, take reins with the other two members. She's certainly a, um, an outstanding citizen, she's worked with the Reality Home or Cornell, um, correctional institution for approximately 30 years, having run it for the last 10 years, so she certainly has, um, expertise in, in hiring and, and all the practices that go into human resources. So, that is why I brought forth her name, and, um, I certainly hope that we can appoint her.
I echo some of that also, Judge. Also, I would like to maybe suggest that your office put together a resolution for the two that are not being reappointed, uh, for their service that they've done for the county and for the public.
Yeah, we can do that, that's not a, as a matter of fact, if y'all could get like a little resume, you know, for, uh, say for Ms. Runhell and, and get one for Mr. Lebma, we can do that, or either one, y'all get together and find out who's gonna do who.
I'll just say, since I brought her, since I brought her initial resume when we.
Oh, okay, you wanna do that, you wanna do Mr. Lebma then? Okay.
Is there any additional information that's needed for Dr. Garcia?
Not from my part.
Motion for approval?
All right. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item 20, consideration of approval of preventive maintenance agreement with Texas Repro Graphics Inc. My only question, uh, it also applies to item 21, was the, uh, non-appropriation funds clause?
Both, both agreements are with the same company, Judge, and I have made all the changes, I talked with the owner, he had no problem, so it's the ones I have submitted to either, are cleaned up versions, and they have a non-appropriation clause.
All right, okay. Uh, do I hear motion on item 20 and 21?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. On item 29, uh, even though it was tabled, let me, do you have, if you could go back and get with the, with the Sheriff's Office, um, on this contract, it, the contract that we're asking to approve expires March 31st of '08, and that just, I don't know why we're coming, you know, this far late to getting a contract approved. Okay? Just check it out.
It expired when, Judge?
It's gonna expire March of '08, which is next month, well, about two months.
Well, and, and it's being made in May of '07.
That's correct.
This is January of?
That's correct.
'08?
Yeah, and that's why I was, I pulled it out, because there's, maybe it's the wrong contract, I'm not sure. Okay. So I had a motion to table that item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. On the travel item J, Javier, this is an easy one, um, the way I read the agreement was to go in support for the, the Laureles Park, I thought we'd already obtained that grant, so why would we be going to support it unless we have to go back for some reason?
Well, staff's, uh, making recommendations, they're gonna make recommendations to the commission, and we're just there to, to, um, I guess, to offer testimony and, and support.
Okay, all right, so that's, I thought we'd already gotten it approved, or?
Well, we got it approved by staff, now the commission ratifies it.
Okay, all right.
Thursday of this week, and I was gonna go with them, but they, you know, I had something come up.
Okay.
So they're gonna go.
All right, that was a point of clarification. Do I hear motion to approve item J? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, under salary schedules, court had an opportunity to look at them? Any questions? Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item 33, approval of county claims. Have the court members had an opportunity to look at the claims?
Including what's, our desk.
Including what was presented. Any questions on claims?
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. By Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? Just please note my abstention on two warrants, one to Huntington Water Works and one to the Public Utilities Board.
What's my, I'm also submitting one for zero, zero, one, nine, four, one, six, seven.
Payable to whom? Payable to whom?
Uh, to Red River.
Red River, okay. Please note those abstentions. Also in your package, you'll notice all the items that are in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars have been highlighted in yellow. Is somebody from the doctor's office here? Rob, how you doing? All procurement was followed, bidding, et cetera, right? Okay. Do I hear motion for the, I'm sorry, we've already had that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note the abstentions. Item thirty-four, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of members to the committee to oversee the distribution of tobacco settlement funds?
Judge Commissioners, sometime last year, you all gave direction to set a committee to oversee the tobacco settlement fund distributions. We're going to come back to you in January to set up that committee, so there's any recommendations at this time.
As we talked about, you know, this came up, we were going through the UPL and the, and the Health Services District, and the court decided to form a committee to look at the distribution of tobacco funds. Javier, if you, if you, do you want to explain the, how much you think we're going to get and the monies, how much we're going to get and what we've been using that money for?
Um, the exact amount is, is difficult to say, because it's based on various factors. This past year, we received four-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, the year before it was three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Since inception, it's, it went down, and now it's been going back up again. It all depends on how many entities apply, how much funds are available, what we submit for reimbursement. So it'll be between three and four-hundred thousand dollars possibly. Historically, well, in the past, since the, I guess, the inception of the Health Services District, those funds were being transferred to them for indigent health care. Since that was dissolved, we received the funds back from them, and if you recall, during the adoption of the budget, those funds were actually deposited into the general fund and were part of this fiscal year's budget within the general fund.
Those are the funds that came back to us from the Health Services District.
Correct. Correct. So we received the application for this fiscal year, and it'll be submitted before March thirty-first, and we usually know in April exactly how much we're going to receive.
And, and the committee was, was to assist us in, in developing programs or worthy causes to use this money, but just, just to remind you, the budget officer, that the, and that's all fine, but keep in mind that the money that came back went into the general fund, and it was appropriated to, to general fund expenditures.
Correct.
This coming year, we're, if, whatever we decide to do with this money, and we're not going to be using it for general fund operations, we have to make that up somewhere. We also going to have, may have to make up, depending on how this indigent health care thing goes, two million dollars. We're also going to have to come up with a million dollars, plus or minus, for the implementation of the two new courts. So I'm not saying anything other than, I've, I've got a member that I want to talk to, see if he'd like to sit on this committee, but as a court, we need to just keep that in mind, that, again, we're going to have a very, very challenging budget year, where we may have to come back and ask for the halfpenny back that we gave in order to balance. We don't know where appraisal is going to go, but if we're looking and seeing what's happening throughout this country in terms of values, we may either stay equal or take a dip, not sure. So just keep that in mind. Is there any timeframe that the court wanted to have this committee in place? Because we're not even going to know what to do till maybe early summer, late spring.
So that's, my understanding was, we were going to, when we talked about this before, we were going to, we put off appointing a committee in December to do it in January, which is now, in order to look at what the committee would recommend and what we would do with the tobacco funds coming in in March or April, whenever they come in. And we don't know how much they are. They're not here, so they haven't been certified, so we can't have used them.
Correct.
What we used was what had been at the Health Services District last year, plus some from the previous year that were still there. So, you know, I still feel like we need to put this committee together, because when these funds do come available, we need to look at what's going to be done with them.
Right.
Obviously, you know, you're right, Judge, we don't know what's going to happen with valuations on property. We know, I think, to a pretty certain degree, that we're going to have some problems with revenues coming in from the bridges, which is going to start next week, the thirty-first, when people have to have two IDs to go across, and, and in the summer, when you have to have a different type of ID to get back into the United States. So there are going to be a lot of budgetary problems, but that's not anything that we don't see all the time. We're going to have to figure out how to do it. But we do need to make a commitment as to what we're going to do with the tobacco funds, and we had, you know, we certainly had to make the commitment, but we certainly talked about, and I thought probably had a fairly good consensus, that we wanted those to go to indigent health care, because we don't have enough money there.
Right.
Even with the UPL funds, if they get back into the program with the federal government and the state government, so that those monies that we put in can be multiplied.
Well, again, the, I don't think that the court has decided not to do this. I mean, I've, I've got a name in mind, but I'm also just cautioning the court that we use those, those tobacco funds this past budgetary cycle to balance the budget. And if we're going to, we're going to earmark them to go someplace else, that's fine, whatever the court wants to do. We're going to be short when we start adopting the oh-seven, oh-eight budget, by at least that amount of money, coupled with the other things that we're going to have. But, you know, we'll find a way to work through it if we can, but just wanted to just remind everybody that that was going to happen. So, does any, do you have a name already, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you just give the name to, to David for the record, and then I have to still contact my guy.
Okay. The person I'm going to be naming would be Daniel Tijerina. He is the PMS director with BISD. He's been with BISD with twenty-seven years and served as assistant principal at Cummings and Rivera.
Okay. Commissioner?
The name I have is Jerry Frank. He served on the Health Services District and is very involved in the indigent health care issues and other issues in the community.
Commissioner Garcia, you have a name yet?
I have a person, but I need a commitment from them before...
All right. Let me, Commissioner Tamayo? You got somebody yet?
Yes, I had already submitted a name to Pete.
Who was that?
Dr. Adela Valdez. She's with the RAC, she's in charge of the students, medical students at, at the RAC.
All right. And I'll try to get a name once I get confirmation from, in the next week or so. Okay.
We can just get contact information for all of them, so we can get hold of them.
The, okay, do I hear a motion to acknowledge the, the, the recommendations by Commissioner Benavides, Commissioner Wood, and Commissioner Tamayo?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood, and Commissioner Garcia and I will give you those names soon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-five, consideration and authorization for the tick eradication division, United States Stated Department of Agriculture to use county property on Florida Road and FM five-eleven, the, the five-eleven, the dipping vat, to place a trailer, RV, for additional office and restroom space, and to install a septic tank. Who's, I'll, I'll bet you.
It's mine. What's up? Judge Commissioners, good evening. This was something that the USDA had requested to place a, a trailer for additional office space and restroom, restroom space, because there was nothing there at this time. I had asked for someone from the USDA to be here, and I don't, I don't believe anyone came this evening. They've also asked for the county, if we'd be able to spare any help, monetary help to fund this project. At this time, I know our tick eradication funding is, won't provide that. Another option would be to possibly have maybe Public Works dig a hole for the septic tank, have our maintenance department maybe help out with the, you know, electricity and the plumbing. But any, to any other extent from that, I don't believe we're really in any position to help them in any financial standpoint. But they are asking for permission to place a trailer for office space and additional restrooms to that specific facility.
You know, I don't, I don't have a problem with what they are asking to do. I have a problem with us trying to figure out how we can expend our energy, effort, money to help them do it. You know, as the judge says, and we all understand, we're going to be in a budget crunch.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can call the federal government, ask them to bail us out. Doesn't work that way, but...
Sure.
Sure.
And that's, that's what I explained to them as well, that we're really, we're in any position to help them out from a monetary standpoint, but I didn't want to approach the court if they would give us permission, or give them permission to put additional space, or to use our property for additional space, office space, restroom space.
Well, anything that we can, you know, and I agree with Commissioner Wood, but there's, anything that we can do in-house.
Yes.
That's fine, but, but to expend any monies right now, at this point, that are not budgeted, or do we have, is just not, not a sound idea right now.
Correct. Understandable. And I have explained that to them, and I, I think they do understand. And they're willing to provide as much, I think, when, when I was speaking to the representative from the USDA, Jimmy Richmond, he mentioned that he was going to try to call Austin and see his, see what type of funding they would be willing to spend on this project.
Okay. Are there any septic systems on this property already?
I don't believe so, no.
No?
There's one little building, it's a little, like a ten-by-ten room that's out there.
So there's, there's no septic system?
No septic system.
Who will become responsible for maintenance and cleanup of that system if there's any potential contamination?
They will. It would strictly fall on the USDA.
But then I would like to see some kind of a, a document or a contract or something to, you know, I mean, we're, we're giving up the use of the property, but I think that we should not give up the liability potential...
I accept the liability.
...in regards to anything happening on that property that would compromise the county, including TCEQ violations, including, you know, somebody getting hurt or whatever.
What's the size of the property? You know, more or less, the size?
No, Commissioner, I couldn't tell you that.
acreage-wise?
I'm sorry?
Acreage-wise, do you have any?
I couldn't tell you. I, I don't know off the top of my head. I can find out, though.
I don't know.
But there is enough space to put a good-sized trailer on there, to provide, you know, about two or three offices and probably one, one restroom.
As long as it's a half acre, it has to be a half acre to have a septic tank on it.
It's a good, I would say maybe an acre approximately, about to give my best guess.
Probably.
Yes, sir. I don't really know where the property lines are, but...
And I'd also be interested in you coming back and letting us know exactly how much the county is going to be doing, whether it's the maintenance department, whatever, because, you know, they're, they're, they've got a long list of projects.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
And I think, you know, this is a Department of Agriculture, and I would think that they could contract and get this done.
Right. Yes, no, I, I agree with you.
Judge and Commissioners, and I'd like some time to look at this, because we can't just be expending money on somebody else. It's, it's in violation of the Constitution.
Well, then you have a motion to table the item.
We also need to look at what agreement we have with them now for them to be on our property, because there are liability issues, and, you know, they've got a dipping tank there, and that's chemicals that who's going to be responsible for ten years down the road?
And there might be agreement in place.
And there may be. I just don't know.
Yeah, and they're currently, I believe they're currently using, you know, the space and effectively being used, they were just wanting some sort of, you know, office to where they can utilize for, for whatever reason.
It would be nice to pull up the agreement that we have, and if we don't have one, we probably need to get one.
Have a written agreement.
Some type of document.
Sure.
All right. Do I hear motion to table?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Benavides, signed by Commissioner Garcia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-six, consideration and possible action to extend Woody's Beach Snack concession agreement on a monthly basis or until a successor's agreement is executed?
Judge Commissioners, I had, this is tied together with the items that we tabled, I believe it's twenty-two and twenty-three, but this concession agreement that we have with Woody's Beach Snack, it expires January thirty-first, and we've been trying to, to prepare a bid document that we could bring to the court for approval as a template that we can use from now on. And that's why the, the tardiness that we've, that we've, that we have, as far as bringing it to the Commissioners' Court and trying to get this bid out on a timely basis, and, you know, if, if the owners of Woody's Beach Snack were successful on their bid, then they would continue operations. If not, then, of course, somebody else would have to move in. But we, we contacted the owners, and we asked them that, that their concession, or reminded them that their concession was going to expire, that they would have to move out. They asked us permission, they would, they would be able to stay there for thirty days or forty-five days, so they can sell their inventory right now, and that'll give us time and maybe overlap with when we get the bid out, and they submit their proposal on the bid, and if they're successful, great. If not, then, of course, we would let them know they have to move out.
I mean, wouldn't it make sense just to, you know, to leave them in there until another bid is awarded? And after a bid is awarded, what is your bid going to say? Let's say if it's, if it's a, if it's a new, if it's a new concessionaire, how much time are you going to give them to, you know, kind of, you know, wrap it up for them? I think you'd give them at least forty-five to sixty days. You know, or, or sooner. I mean, I don't know what timeframe they need, but I don't want, I don't want to have to award to another concessionaire, and these folks have to be out in a week. That's not fair. I mean, obviously, I think, you know, minimum of thirty days, maybe maximum of sixty days, but you may want to put that in your, in your bid.
Okay.
That, you know, the, the eventual winner of the bid, you know, gives the old guy or the old concessionaire, you know, minimum thirty, maximum sixty days to move out. That's, that's part of the deal.
Something along the lines of successful bidder doesn't take over until thirty days after that period of time.
Minimum.
Yeah. To give them a chance to wind up their business.
Right.
But I wouldn't want them to start selling off stuff and not have, have stuff available to sell during this period of time.
Right.
While it's going out for bids, and then, you know, people not have access to some of the things that they sell out there.
Can you do that? Put that in the, and, and let them, and let them know that, that they are not the successful bidder, that they're going to have enough time, and put that in the bid document, again, thirty, forty-five to sixty days, whatever. I guess ask them, if, if you're not the, the winning bidder, how much time do you need to, to move out? If they tell you thirty days, well, that's, that's what's in the, if they tell you ninety days, well, no, you can't, you got to bring it back.
Okay.
So kind of just use, you know, work with them, you know, and, and use your, use your judgment.
So we're going to bid this out, not RFP it?
That's correct.
Is there a reason for that?
Yes, because of all the, I guess, the confusion and everything, the, the problems that we had with the previous RFP that we went...
Yeah, but the problems were that we did not identify things and timelines. I figured that by now, we would have refined that document to where we would have a good document for RFP and for concessions on the island, because we went through all kinds of changes on contracts, and changes and changes, and...
Not too long ago.
Commissioner?
Not too long ago.
This is not an RFP, but I think they're going to be putting before you will be a bid, so it'll be a sealed bid. Whoever gets the best price is basically, will be, the person gets awarded the contract.
But the bid document will have all the information in it to the bidders of what we expect them to be doing at that location.
Yes.
And they need to comply with all of those specifications.
There will be no evaluation according to points and that kind of thing that we did a couple last year. This will be just, you know, we'll open up the...
Why is that? Have we changed it, how we're going to do business on the island in regards to concessions?
We're trying to change it to where, when it's just a lease of space and it's the same kind of business, we, in the bid, it's very specific as to the type of business, what, you know, which has been there, I don't know, you know, over years and years and years, so that it's just, it's a lot simpler for the people bidding and then it's a lot simpler for the county when we open up with bids, we just go by price versus having to evaluate the same information except, you know, there's a couple differences. And we went through a lot of problems with the evaluation process and I think this, we can recommend that this would simplify.
Yeah, but the problems that we had were things that we had not identified on that document as how long the lease would run, as an example, okay? When the lease would start, you know, I mean, those kinds of things, they're fairly easy to fix.
Specific things.
The specific things of the lease, you know. I just don't want to leave money on the table for the county by not using an instrument that was successful for us versus using one that...
Well, I think, I think that the bid, I mean, the reason we're going out for a bid is because the businesses are pretty much established, I mean, the building's there. We're just going to bid to rent the building and to operate it. But the terms are in there, I mean, everything's in there, the type of use, the, the only thing that we're going to do is, I mean, they're going to provide us with their, whatever they're going to pay us per month. And, I mean, that can be negotiated up. We don't have to take whatever their bid is, I mean, we can negotiate that up if we need to.
Can we negotiate a bid? I don't think so legally.
No, you're supposed to go on, who, in this case, it's not the lowest bid, it's going to be whoever provides, we, you know, to us, the highest, best offer is what, is what the term is, is how it's used.
I just don't want to create confusion for the folks bidding on the concession because we had plenty of that the last go-around. And anything we can do to simplify the process for these individuals would be greatly appreciated as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I think we have, we've gone through this thing many times through the bid document and I think we've pretty much tried to keep all the loopholes, you know, as limited as possible. And we've tried to answer all the questions if somebody were to bid on it. We have all the information and we've placed it in the bid document. And we've also added a copy of our concession agreement in there, a sample of our concession agreement in there, so they'll understand what the terms will be.
Javier, so that means that the previous awarding of the other concessionaires' proposals or whatever, that means that when their five years are up, we're going to treat them the same as this?
That's correct.
In bidding form and stop the proposal?
Correct. We'll bid those out.
Okay.
Or sooner they choose to terminate or we choose to terminate earlier, right?
Either way.
Thirty-day outs. There's thirty-day outs on all those contracts.